Right, good evening. I would like to call the February 18th, 2015 Los Manos City Council Meeting to order, and all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Police Chief Prezy.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Mallon.
Faria.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Stone Grove.
Here.
Valotta.
Thank you. Now we'll move to consideration of the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second? Ms. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Silveira and a second by Ms. Lewis to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Cassandra Helmerick. I am a resident of Los Manos, and I'd like to say first and foremost, thank goodness the school got passed. You know, new school, new energy, new rules. So I'm excited about that. As you know, I wear a few hats. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the Rotary Crab Feed. Their tickets for March 27th, and they're $55 apiece, and any Rotarian will be more than happy to help you out with a ticket. Thirdly, I am with the VFW, and we are having a parade meeting on Monday, and would love for y'all to come out and help us plan another fabulous parade this year. That will be at the VFW Hall at 8:00 Monday morning. So, and Mr. Silveira, I would still like you to bring a tie-dye cow, red, white, and blue. We're color-maryed, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow, this is kind of unusual, seeing you up front and center.
I don't know what's going on there, mentor. So I just want to say hi to all of you guys tonight, and I wanted to hear, I wanted to speak tonight about our annual spring cleanup event that's happening Saturday, March 28th, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., located in the Merced County Spring Fair parking lot on the corner of F. and 4th Street. No household hazardous waste will be accepted at this event. Electronics, computer monitors will be accepted. Tires will be accepted, no more than eight tires per customer. Oasis Rehand Store will be on hand collecting clothes donations. I think that's great, this time of year is cold, and we can prepare the, you know, and help, and help out the, the community. They will provide tax receipts as well. We're mad. We ask that you arrive early, as lines do develop rather quickly, and please be cordial to one another, because at these types of events, "You cut me off, why'd you no cut these?" Like, wait a minute, we're, we're, you know, we're in elementary school here. So I also want to remind residents that they, they can also place two gallons of oil in a sealed container. Not a lot of people are aware of that, so when they're working on their vehicles, they have, they want to know where to put the stuff, but you can always put two in front of your trash, your trash carts, and the drivers will pick them up along with one oil. What else did I want? And that's pretty much it. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Ernie Roak. I'm a resident here of Los Manos, Los Manos, I almost said California. We all know that, all right? But anyway, I'm here to, to announce once again that on Saturday, February 21st, at the Community Center from 10:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon, we're going to be having the, the basketball free throw contest sponsored by the Knights of Columbus. And this night, this, this contest is going to be sponsoring the local and the district contests. Now, the local contest for our, our participants were nine to 14, male and female, okay, are going to, the winners of the, the local contest will receive a certificate. Then they'll go on this very same day in the very same gym at the Community Center, okay, and they're going to have the regional contest, I'm sorry, the district contest, and there they're going to have the ability to win medals, okay, that they've put around their necks, and they'll be able to display at school and on the streets and go to the movies and, do we have a bowling, not kidding there, okay? All these places, they're going to be able to display it with pride, okay? So anyway, so we're going to ask parents out there in TV land to please bring their children, ages nine to 14, get them there about 9:30 so they can sign up, okay? We're also, we're going to have coffee for the parents who get them there early. Coffee and donuts, beautiful donuts, I'm telling you right now. I'm going to go get them over there on Pacheco, one of them places. But anyway, we're going to have those, and then for the participants, after the event, we're going to have wonderful hot dogs for the participants, and parents too, but they're going to be in the, in the stands hopefully cheering, cheering on for the kids, okay? So we want to invite the city council members, Bill, you too, Steve, you also, Chief, you come along too. We invite you all over there to cheer these, cheer these participants on and, and get them all, all riled up and ready to shoot them baskets and win. All right? Okay, very good. Be there or be square. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Protim Faria, city council, staff, and audience. My name is Mark Bodley, I live in Los Manos, and I am the city council's representative to the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District. I have provided you with a written report about our past year's activities, but Steve asked me to give a, a little brief report to the city council at tonight's meeting. Just to briefly describe the, the district, our district is a special district with our administrative staff located at the old Army Air Base in between that water and Merced. We have a staff of a manager, assistant manager, biologist, two office staff members, control technicians, and then seasonal control technicians that we employ during the summer. We also have a west side depot and office. On this side, it's on Deepwell Road, about 10 miles northeast of Los Manos. That is where we keep all of our aircraft, and we have a runway there also. Our Merced location, since it was a lot of old buildings, it's been there since the '40s when the Army built the base. Our new building, we moved into last fall, replaces the old, old buildings, and we also have a, the storage facility, facilities there for our chemicals that we use in our spraying activities. Because of the large area of wetlands in Merced County, we use our four aircraft to become the, the best method for spraying all the duck clubs, rice fields, and other wetlands of the, of the county. Our twin-engine aircraft, which we have two of those, are also used to spray over the cities of the county if the need arises. And that's not too often where we do spray directly over the cities, but it does happen if there's an outbreak of a disease that we, such as West Nile virus. Our mission is to provide countywide mosquito control to prevent mosquito-borne disease and reduce discomfort from pestiferous mosquitoes. Standing water is the main source of mosquitoes, and it can be found most anywhere, flower pots, old tires, irrigated pastures, dairy lagoons, rice fields, duck clubs, storm drains, and neglected swimming pools. And even though we have a serious, serious drought, there are still plenty of breeding places for mosquitoes. We hope that this coming season will be one that we, such as we had last year, we only had one case of West Nile virus in Merced County. That was a gentleman in North Merced. We have not had any cases in Los Manos for a number of years. The disease, of course, is carried by birds. Mosquitoes bite the birds and then transmit the virus through, to humans and horses. All other animals are immune to West Nile virus. We do have a new proposed method of treating mosquitoes, and that is, of course, what we call unmanned aerial vehicles, or in short drones. However, there's still a lot of research, and we know regulations coming from the Federal Aviation Agency that before we would ever attempt to use those kinds of equipment. We do not propose to use that too much in our valley because of the vastness of, we need larger aircraft that would carry a much greater load of material.
Mr. Carey? No, what do you say? What do you say? I'm sorry. Please, go on, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I just wanted to mention that this coming year, we hope will be as good as this last year, and with, with, even though we only had one case in Merced County, we're hopeful that this coming season, we will have no cases. We are kind of continuing to follow a mosquito that's been found in Madera County, and it carries dengue fever. So we are on the lookout for that mosquito again this year, and in Southern California, the Asian tiger species of mosquito has been found, and it carries yellow fever. So I know my time is somewhat limited, and that's just a very brief description. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you. I do not know all the scientific names of mosquitoes, but if, if you so desire for all of that technical data, I can certainly find it for you. Our district number, of course, is located in, of course, online, we have a website online that has all the information. Residents can submit a request for mosquito control for if they have an outbreak or something, or there's a large event happening. You can request, and we will try to come and treat the area prior to the event. So we are very, hopefully, user-friendly with all of our residents of Merced County. And again, our number is 800-622-3242, or you can call me at 826-3687. So is there any questions?
Mark, I just wanted to thank you for the report, but really, I wanted to thank you for the 38 years of service. That's phenomenal.
Well, I'm your appointee.
That is absolutely phenomenal, so thank you and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mallon. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum? Seeing no one, I will move on to the consent agenda. Consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And for this, for the consent agenda, we will go to our city clerk, Mrs. Mallon.
We have two items on the consent agenda. Check registered numbers, 151561 through 151873, and the amount of $1,296,525.51 minutes for the February 4th, 2015 city council meeting, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Would any member of the council like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for individual discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to approve the consent, submit a request to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Stone Grove?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lewis, second by Ms. Stone Grove, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We'll now move on to our presentation regarding the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant Vehicle Replacement Program, the CMAC. And for that, we will go to our Public Works Director and City Engineer, Mr. Faishen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protim and council members. Tonight, we're going to look at, for last year, we've been talking about that we were getting vehicles on the CMAC, which is the congestion mitigation air quality program. All five vehicles, we have purchased, they're in and they're out front, so we can take a look at them later. Before I get into the brief presentation, though, I'd like to let you know where this money comes from. In 2012, the federal aid housing program became something that you probably have heard, and it became, it's called MAP 21. And that's when all the federal transportation dollars went into, the program is called MAP 21, which stands for Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century Act. A very nice name for federal traffic, housing, I mean, transportation money is what it really is. And it was put together and it summarized, all the different funds came into one pot, and then the federal government would distribute that, distribute that to the states, and the states would actually administer the funds. And CMAC is one of the programs that, that the MAP 21 is related to. And in CMAC, the basic thing about the CMAC is, it's an effort to attain air quality standards, as defined by the Clean Air Act in 1990 and subsequent acts after that. So CMAC funds you compete for, and they're grants, and it's based on how much, how your green gas is, how much green gas you can reduce. So all these applications for vehicles, and most of them are for projects, not vehicles, you have to do a comprehensive calculation that shows that your use is going to supersede the previous engine that was in that vehicle, or the project's going to make less traffic and more pedestrian traffic if it's a project. That's how you compete, and then you get grants based on that. But that's, that's just the technical part of it. Now we'll get into the vehicle part of it. And as I said, the CMAC helped replace five of our outdated pieces of equipment at very minimal cost to the city, and you'll see this at the end, how much of a minimal cost it was. First one I'd like to show you is the, the 1981 International Dump Truck. It's the old one that we used to have. We still have it, but it's not in use. And this was replaced through the CMAC funds by this very nice 2014 Freightliner Dump Truck. And that's out front, and you can see that. And all these vehicles have been, some have been in use a little bit longer than others, so they don't look spanking new, but they're very new, so. And to give you some indication of, just on this dump truck, the purchase cost of this was $130,000, $179. CMAC reimbursed us 88% of that, and that's $115,248, so the cost to city was a little bit under $15,000. That's a savings of 88%. Now, in this particular vehicle, this is the last one we got, and we put the invoice in, it hasn't been paid yet. All the other ones, we have gotten the CMAC money, but this is being processed right now. It's, it's in their accounting office. The next vehicle is, we had a 1969 Caterpillar motor grader, and that was the old one, many years of good service. That was replaced with the 2013 Volvo motor grader, and that's the new one that we've used quite a bit. Keep in mind, they are federal funds, we have a lot of requirements, we have to do American-built, US-built as much as we can, and some, some companies don't, and certain vehicles don't qualify for it, and some do. To see how that relates to how much that we actually paid for that, the purchase price of this was $218,000, and we got reimbursed 100% of that from CMAC. Now, what CMAC does is, CMAC picks up 88%, 88 in a percentage, and the city's supposed to pick up their own 12%. MCAG actually had additional funds available, and they, several of these vehicles, they picked up our 12%, so it was no cost to us. So the savings on this one was 100%. The next two vehicles are 1988 Caterpillar backhoe and an 82 John Deere backhoe. And they were replaced with two new 2014 John Deere backhoes. And the savings of two of these is, the price of these was $192,000, $170,000 came from CMAC, $22,000 was the cost to the city for two of these, and that's an 88 and 1/2% savings. This is an old 1997 Caterpillar loader, used a lot, we use them all the time, all these vehicles we use a lot. The new one is also a 2000, also a Caterpillar, 2014 loader. And the cost, what hap, this is another one that was 100% funded, so it will cost $114,000, and that's what was reimbursed for CMAC, so that was 100%. The last sheet is very interesting, it's a summary of these, and if you look at these, we got, the five, the five-piece equipment were about $655,000. The reimbursement from CMAC was $618,000. The cost to the city for these five-piece equipment was just at $37,000. And this is not taken to account the salvage value of the vehicles. What is mandatory about this, because you're supposed to get the engines off, offline, is what you do. So we have to break the block, we have to put a rod through the block, but then we're allowed to sell for scrap, or sell the vehicle, and someone else can replace the engine if they want. So we estimate, we haven't auctioned any of them, we estimate we have about $10,000 of salvage value for, or to sell to somebody else. So that leaves these about $27,000. You know, a good accord, you know, we, we got five-piece equipment for a good car. That's 95, 94% savings, not counting that $10,000. And if there's any questions on these, we do have these parked outside. We wanted to make sure that you saw that there's actual vehicles with all the stuff that we were processing, and they're used every day. They're wonderful vehicles, and it's nice, because if we didn't get these, eventually we would have to retrofit the engine or mothball them ourselves. So, so it's, it's not a waste of taxpayers' money, they, they were ready to go, and if we didn't get these, it would have been, just, we had to do it on our own dime. And we didn't have any transportation projects available, but we did have equipment. And the equipment pool is actually drying up, so we got there in the right time to do this.
Very good. We're very pleased to see it, too. I want to commend the staff on our aggressive, your aggressive approach to going after money that's available, federal government, state government, when they make funds available. The city staff has to take initiative to pursue those funds, and our staff has done that. Mark has done a fantastic job on this. This is a non-action item, so if any council members would like to make any comments? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to also commend Mark and your staff, as well as our city staff who assisted in this. Like you said, Mark, you know, the average car today costs $37,000 easily, so we've got five new pieces of equipment that our city needed so badly to be able to put those old pieces of equipment into mothballs, so. And then with the idea of being able to salvage what's left over and garner more money, we couldn't have asked for a better deal. So thank you for all the work you did in helping our city get this new equipment.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, it, I've talked to Mark about this before, and we, and I appreciate the hard work that they've done on it, and I know that the employees appreciate it, because these pieces of equipment, they're a lot more technical, but they're a lot more efficient, they're easier to use, the guys can do a better job with them, and you know, and let's face it, when, when you're, you got a nice brand-new piece of equipment, you're, you're excited to be on it, and you know, hopefully that translates, translates into that they're going to get, they're going to be well taken care of, because they seen how long we have to keep those pieces of equipment around when you're talking a 1969 grader that we had there. So, you know, I think it's just a win-win all the way around. It's a, it's a win-win for the citizens, it's a win-win for the employees and the staff that were all involved in it. And, you know, when it comes to these, these federal and state grants, they, you know, the money comes from somewhere, we all pay for them, in one way or another, we all pay for them, and so, you know, if we don't take advantage of it here, somebody else is going to take advantage of it somewhere else. So in a situation like this, I'm very thankful that we took advantage of it. I mean, when you look at that number, roughly $700,000 worth of equipment for $30-some-thousand, that's, that's a pretty good investment. I would take, I wish I could buy one like that myself, you know? So, good job on it, and congratulations to the guys that get to operate those nice pieces of equipment.
Thank you. Well, I don't know, in most, in our family, when someone gets a new car, we have to sh- Well, I don't know, in most, in our family, when someone gets a new car, we have to show it off, you know, we have to invite the folks over, take a ride out. So, we, with the indulgence of the council, we'll take about a 15-minute break, so we can all go outside and look at the, at the new toys. And we will resume in 15 minutes. We will reconvene the meeting at 7:39, and we will, we want to thank, once again, Public Works for bringing the equipment over, and so we can have show and tell, and have a lot of fun sitting in the driver's seats. So, thanks again. We'll move on now to Item 8, and we'll go to Assistant Planner Elms for the City of Los Banas Housing Element, which will be part of upgraded general plan in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem, for your, so tonight's presentation, I'm going to go over, basically, what is the housing element, what is the process, what is the purpose, and then what is the benefit to the City of Los Banas. And then, at the end of my presentation, I do have our consultants here, who will also do a presentation for you. So, what the housing element is, it's one of the seven state-mandated elements of the city's general plan. So, it is required by the state that we accomplish, or we complete this document, and we get it certified by the state. The housing element law, it was enacted in 1969, and it mandates that local governments adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community, and that local governments must adopt land use plans and regulatory systems, which provide opportunities for and do not unduly constrain housing development. And it's just to make sure that we are planning for our housing needs adequately, and the state wants to ensure that we're covering all housing needs, the whole spectrum, from very low income to above moderate income. So, the purpose is to analyze our housing characteristics. We will analyze our population, our demographics, and the number of households and housing units, our housing conditions, special needs for the elderly, we need to look at that as well, disabled housing, and also housing for farm workers. We will be analyzing our existing housing options, will ensure adequate sites for future housing needs, and accommodate Los Banas' share of the regional housing needs for the planning period of 2014 to 2023. So, it's really a 10-year projection, because the timeframe starts January 1st to the end of December in 2023. And it's going to address housing needs of all economic segments of the city. So, the legal requirements for housing elements are that local agencies, which are counties and cities, are required to update their housing element every five years to meet state law requirements. Now, with this cycle, we're in the fifth cycle, Merced County is in the fifth cycle, the state has allowed us to go eight years, as long as we turn in our housing element, we get our housing element certified in time, which we are way ahead of the curve, and we should be able to accomplish that goal. The only element, this is the only element of our general plan that requires state certification. So, no other part of the general plan requires this type of certification from the state. The current RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, is for the fifth housing element cycle, and like I said, it covers a 10-year period from January 1st, 2014, to December 31st, 2023. And so, it's taking a projection for our housing needs based on that time period. And state law requires that policies and programs within the housing element are consistent with other elements of our general plan. And so, the regional housing needs allocation, this is from the state, it's from HCD, Housing and Community Development, allocates a region's share of the statewide housing need to local COGS, which are our council of governments. So, what they do is divvy out to MCAAG, Merced County Association of Governments, what our allocation is, and then MCAAG has a methodology that they use to then distribute to all the jurisdictions within the county, and also Merced County themselves. And this is based on the Department of Finance's population and projections. Merced County's allocation for this cycle was 15,850 units, and so they have to spread that out throughout all the jurisdictions, and our allocation for Los Banas is 2,473 total housing needs. So, we need to spread that out between very low income, low income, moderate income, and above moderate income. So, our housing element update process. So, what we're going to be doing is, we'll do regional housing needs assessment, and we'll get some community input. We're going to be doing some workshops out for the community to see what type of needs we need to be providing for, and what type of policies and goals that we should be incorporating into our element. We're going to review the city's 2009 and 2014 housing element. We are in compliance, it's a certified housing We are in compliance, it's a certified housing element, and so we're just going to go through that and see what our goals and policies were that we had said that we would be accomplishing, and see what worked for us and what didn't. We'll be evaluating the constraints to provide housing. We'll do an evaluation of land inventory and resources. So basically what that would consist of is looking through our infill and what projects we have out on the books, what projects are at market rate, what do we have as low income, and documenting all of that for the state. We'll do a draft housing element for public review, and then we do a presentation to the Planning Commission, and then also to the City Council. The City Council will then give us the authority to submit the housing element to the state. So the potential benefits of having a certified housing element is that it allows the city to qualify for funding programs offered by the federal and state government for local housing and economic development activities. And mostly for what activities we apply for in the city would be CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. I actually will be doing a presentation here on April 1st on our activities that we will be applying for with this upcoming NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, for that Community Development Block Grant. So it is important, we would not be able to apply for that grant funding unless we had a certified housing element. We will be going out for public participation, and this is a very key component of our housing element. We need to prove to HCD, to the state, that we've gone out to the public, and we've listened to their comments, and we've applied them to our housing element. So we're going to be holding some public workshops. Our last housing element, we went out to faith-based location, central to the community, and we also went to the community center. We're probably going to be doing that in different locations as well. We'll have somebody who's bilingual that can translate for us, and just to get a really good rounded participation from the public, and hopefully we get some good public participation. It always makes for a really good housing element. We're going to be doing a housing survey, and then there will be a 60-day public review of our draft 2014-2023 housing element update, and then it would be presented to the Planning Commission, and then finally to the City Council, all during public hearing opportunities. So with that, I'm going to introduce our consultant that is going to be helping us prepare our housing element. It's JB Anderson, Land Use Planning, and I have John B. Anderson here, and Mark Niskanen, and I'd like to introduce them, have them speak a little bit about their firm, and let you know what they're going to be doing specifically for us.
Thank you, Stacy. Good evening, Mayor Protem Fariah, members of the council. As Stacy mentioned, my name is Mark Niskanen, Senior Planner with JB Anderson Land Use Planning. Very happy to be in front of you tonight. I'm also joined by President John Anderson. I want to give you just kind of a brief overview on who we are, what we do. Our firm was established in 1994. We provide a variety of land use environmental planning services to a number of public agencies, not only in the Central Valley but also in the Sierra Nevada foothills. We are currently contract planners for the cities of Waterford, Riverbank, and Oakdale. As it relates to housing elements, a little history of our experience, in the previous cycle, the 2007 to 2014 cycle, we achieved state certification for the housing elements of the cities of Series, Livingston, and the county of Mariposa. Now for this cycle, the fifth cycle, we are currently preparing housing element updates for the cities of Riverbank, Waterford, Series, and now, of course, the city of Los Banos. I think Stacy did, pretty much summed up what the process looks like. Our role really is going to be technical in nature, I think. The city's current housing element was adopted in 2009, and the reality is not a whole lot has changed since that time by way of state housing law, or quite frankly, housing development all over the nation. So really what we will be providing is a technical update, and also assisting Stacy with the public participation program, which will include public workshops, a housing questionnaire, and public hearings. So what we'll do is we'll go through the document, update where we need to update it, update the population demographic, demographic data, update the city's vacant sites inventory, and then finally, update the policies and programs of the city's housing element. So with that, I think that kind of sums it up. I'd be happy to answer or address any questions or comments you might have.
Mr. Carrigan?
Can you give us just a brief description of a timeline and when it gets to the state for certification?
Absolutely. So assuming we get started tomorrow, just for discussion purposes, it'll take us a few months to go through the document, conduct public workshops, things like that. That probably projects us into, you know, middle of spring, late spring. We come back to the Planning Commission and City Council and ask for authorization to submit the housing element document to HCD. Now that first review from HCD is a 60-day review period. So what they'll do is they'll take the full 60 days and then send back a comment letter providing comments on where we need to make revisions to comply with housing law and things like that. So we'll go ahead and make those changes. We'll, the housing element is a project defined by CEQA, so we will have to do a CEQA compliance document, typically an initial study, negative declaration, that'll go out for a 30-day review as well. And we'll come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for public hearings, and then submit the adopted housing element to the state for a 90-day review. Currently, we're projecting that we could probably submit an adopted copy to the state, or an adopted housing element to the state easily by the end of the year, which would put us in great shape. Your deadline to actually submit just a draft to the state is June 2016, so you're well ahead of the schedule in terms of the state requirements.
So just to jump in, my goal is to be completed with the public hearing process and through the City Council process by the end of December 2015, and that way we have that 90-day review period with HCD, and that would hopefully be certified then in March of 2016.
Thank you.
Mr. Silver?
Have you ever submitted one, the initial one that you submit to the state, and it was perfect, and they didn't send anything, they didn't send anything back as far as like?
I'll be honest, no.
No.
They always have comments. Our experience through the last cycle, the ones we're doing now, we haven't gotten to the point where we've submitted documents or submitted a housing element for review. But I will tell you, in the fourth cycle, it was interesting, the comments we get, there were hot-button issues HCD kind of keyed in on, and it had to do with some state legislation that was adopted back in 2007 related to the housing element. So the theme there is, what I think the state does is they key in on certain issues, and they provide you comments on those certain issues. I will say that this, you know, this cycle, you know, the state has recognized that a lot of the cities and jurisdictions, counties, adopted their housing element within the last two, three, four, five years. Nothing really has changed since that time, and they actually came up with a streamlined review process where they will only review where those changes have been made in the housing element. What you do is when you submit the housing element document, you fill out a form, it's about a 10-page form, basically identifying where those changes have been made, and they'll only focus on those changes. Now streamlined is a bit of a misnomer because they still take the 60 days and they still take the 90 days. But the key is they only focus on where those changes have been made, so.
Very good. And my next question is, is back to that number, and I don't know if this is a question for you or a question for Stacy, but the 2,473 that's Los Banos' portion, could you explain a little bit more, is that, we're short 2,473 homes, explain to me what that number means?
So the state is trying to project the growth for the state of California, and so it's over 15,000 units for Merced County as a region, and then it gets distributed out to all the jurisdictions. So we all have to have our fair share, whether we like it or not. And then we distribute that number between very low, low, and so that's, that's how it gets distributed out. There's a methodology that is used, the numbers come from the Department of Finance, it's based on our population, it's based on projection. So it's basically between 2014 and 2023 what we're projected to grow.
So then, they're saying that in between now and 2023, that we're going to need to build 2,473 units, and then there's supposed to be a variation of low, very low, moderate?
Well, let me clarify something there. On the regional housing needs assessment, the state law doesn't require that you build that number of units, they require that you plan for that number of units through your general plan and zoning ordinance. So for example, when you have a vacant site that's designated for low-density residential development, we can take that site and account it for as part of our regional housing needs. Okay?
Very good. So then, that number doesn't limit you high or low then? If something, if we build more than that, you're not penalized, and if you build under that, you're not penalized?
No.
It's just what we need to plan for?
Correct.
Very good. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with any questions? I want to thank you very much, consultant, and thank Assistant Planner Elms, excellent presentation, looking forward to moving forward with you on this, on this housing element project, and looking forward to having the citizens' input because that's a vital part of making this happen. Thank you very much for coming to Los Banos.
Thank you.
Move on to item nine, advisement of public notices, and that will be Assistant Planner Elms.
Okay, so we have, I'm sorry, we have one report. It is a cottage food operator. It is located on Hemlock Drive, 1656 Hemlock. This is the first cottage food operation. This was a new law that was enacted back in January 1st, 2014, and which allows for residents to have basically bakeries in their homes. So the state of California said basically that local governments needed to allow for this in our zoning, and so we do have an ordinance that does permit this in the R1 zoning district where Hemlock Drive is located. And this particular applicant will be preparing baked goods, non-perishable baked goods, and their business name is Before and After Services. So the Planning Commission will be determining whether they meet all the criteria of the ordinance, and that'll be on February 25th, 2015, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to City Manager Report, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you. I have two items to just talk about quickly. One is the homeless count took place in January, and the numbers were released today countywide. The homeless figures are up. Locally, the figures were down. There'll be an article from Thaddeus Miller, I saw him today, and he asked me what my thoughts were, and I told him I thought that the economy really hadn't quite rebounded to the point where those homeless figures were dropped dramatically, but I also think that, so therefore there are still people that are homeless, and more people are homeless this year than were homeless last year. But I also felt that the continuum of care and the volunteers that are part of the count are doing a better job each year counting the homeless. So it's a combination of the economy not being as strong as we'd all like it to be, but also the volunteers are doing a really good job counting the homeless. So there'll be an article in the papers over the next few days, I'm sure, so you'll see those figures. And the other item I wanted to talk about was, two weeks ago, we had the auditors here giving a presentation, and I thought it went very well. I'm very hard on the finance department, I'm probably harder on them than police or fire or Public Works because the finance department can't have mistakes, and you know, you don't hear me talk this way too much, but I'm kind of pulling the curtain back a little bit. We just can't have mistakes, and we don't, they deliver. And two weeks ago, I did not thank them publicly, and I felt really bad about it, so I want to thank Sonia and her staff, Kim, Rosemary, gosh, Martha, all of them. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you do. We're a small team, but again, they deliver, and you should be very comfortable in knowing that they take pride in what they do, and I see them every day, and they work as hard as anybody at the city. So I'm sorry I forgot two weeks ago to say thank you, but I felt bad about it for two weeks, because I do hold them to a different standard, and again, for the third time, they deliver, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Move on to council member reports. I'm listed first. Remind everyone, Monday morning, VFW meeting regarding the Veterans Parade, I think that's at 8:00 in the morning, the VFW Hall. Cassandra Helmerich is in charge of that, you can contact her. And then Saturday, Knights of Columbus, we'll have the basketball free throw contest, starts from 10, goes to 1, have both the local and the district, ages 9 to 14, and we hope you can make it there, it's at the community center, and they're going to have donuts and coffee in the morning, and hot dogs for lunch. So if you can make it out for that, I hope you can. I hope everyone had a wonderful Valentine's Day, and also enjoyed the President's Day, and remembering presidents and all that they've done, and all the risks they take, and all the work they do for the country. Once you sit in that Oval Office, life gets pretty tough, it's 24/7 for as long as you're there. So we want to make sure we respect that office and all that our presidents do and have done for us. Next, today on our council member reports, we have Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. I just, and thank you, Tom, for making those announcements for the events that are happening over the weekend. One of the things that I want to state is that our city staff and various agencies are working in our downtown area with code enforcement and various other issues that are happening down there. I want to thank them, and I want to ask the public to be patient with us. We're working very diligently to continue to raise our quality of life here in Los Banos, and upgrading and enhancing our downtown. Right now, they're concentrating on the I Street area, so you should be hearing some things coming pretty, pretty soon about what they're doing, and I want to thank the businesses who, you know, keep their storefronts up. It's all about making Los Banos the place where people want to live and the destination to come. So thank you to our staff and employees who are making all these things possible, and to our city manager who is working and coordinating with our staff to make sure that we do have a nice downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Silver?
I got a couple things. One is, you guys heard Eric Lemon get up here earlier, and he spoke about the spring cleanup, and so March 28th, it's March 28th, it'll be at the Fairgrounds parking lot across from the Fairgrounds there from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. But I just wanted to, I just tell you, it's been such a pleasure working with Eric, and it's not only my interaction with him, and I see him, he's out in the community, but I just, it happened today, I went into a business, and we were discussing trash bins and the recycle bins, and your name came up, Eric, and just, the gentleman that I spoke to just had nothing but great things to say. He said that you've been the best representative that he's ever worked with, with Allied, now Republic Service. So it just, you know, I see it, and I'm glad that other people are seeing it, and I appreciate that you come down here, and that you're a part of, I mean, God, you're our go-to guy. If we need something, and I know if members of the community have issues, you're right there to help, help them out with it and work, help find a solution to it. So, you know, I keep up the good work, and I hope that your company's listening, and I hope that they do appreciate the job that you're doing, because at least from my point of view, as being on the City Council, and outside of City Council when I see you anywhere, you always got a big smile on your face, and you're happy to be here, and it's, it really is infectious. So keep up the good work, and thank you for your service. And the last thing that I want to talk about tonight is, is, you know, this water situation that we're dealing with, it's, in the city, you know, you turn on your water because our Public Works guys do such a good job, you turn on your water and it's there, it's at the faucet, but the reality is, is it's getting very, very interesting with what the State Water Resource Board is doing, and, you know, you see stuff in the paper, and, you know, if you're on Facebook or wherever, you see that there's these different meetings going on, and, you know, the State Water Resource Board today, and I don't know what the final outcome of the meeting was, but, you know, they've, they've made a ruling that affects farming, and it's not only farming, you know, I don't want to put it, the farmers against the fish, but it affects people's livelihoods. There was some room, some allowance in there for them to do some additional pumping, and in the grand scheme of things, it wasn't a whole bunch, but it was just that there was language in there that they could, and the State Water Resource Board, and I mean, even, God, Senator Feinstein agreed with allowing some of these looser, you know, a little bit more looser interpretation, if you will, of the restrictions, and the State Water Resource, against everybody that I know of, has said, no, we're the kings of this ship, we're the unelected bureaucrats who are in charge of California's water, and when we say no, that means no, and it doesn't matter what you elected or you people think about it. And it's frustr- And it's frustrating because it's going to affect communities. Our sister communities up and down this valley that rely 100% on surface water for their drinking water, it's going to affect them. And so when you hear these calls to action, to send letters to your assemblymen, send letters to your state senators, send letters to the governors, wherever you need to send them, get involved, get involved, because that's when they pay attention. If, you know, we just keep going about our daily lives, and we think, oh, well, the next guy's got it, it's not going to help us. If you want to get involved in your local government, that's one way to do it, is to, you know, kind of follow these things, because I'm telling you guys, it's going to get bad, it's going to get bad. And this community, before anything else, we are a very big agriculture community. You might not realize it, but we rely on ag dollars in this community quite a bit. There's a lot of people that indirectly or directly, their job is related directly to agriculture, all the way from, you know, the guy that's actually out there in the fields to even a school teacher. A lot of those kids that those school teachers are teaching are ag kids, kids that, families that work in ag. So it's just something that, and I know it's ramping up again, because, you know, we've all been cautiously optimistic that all the next storm is going to help, and it's, and, you know, and we've, it's been said since the very beginning that even if we had a normal rainfall here, it still wasn't going to do anything for the drought. So it's just, it's, keep it in mind, and if you want to get involved, if you're, if you're out there and you're listening to me right now, and you thought to yourself, how can I get involved? This is one way to get involved, is, is, you know, you got people that are working across party lines, this is not a Republican-Democrat thing, this to me is a bureaucrat and everybody else thing. They got real big heads on their shoulders, and I'm not afraid to say it, and they, they're going to, they're going to put a big hurting on us, and it's, and I hate to say this, is it's almost like it didn't get bad enough last year. As bad as it was, it didn't get bad enough to make the everyday person affect them to say, whoa, we need to do something about this, we need to call our legislators, we need to fix this. Because, you know, in farming, I like to say what we do is, is we just go to work, that's it. They give us, they give us a hand, and we, we figure out a way to make it work, and that's what we do. That's, you know, I say farming is just legalized gambling, we just, you know, you go out there and you invest all this money into groundwork and planting a crop, and at the end of it, you hope that you, you make it at the end, you hope that the expenses didn't, you know, don't oversee the, the income. So it's going to, it's going to affect us, and if it keeps going down this road, it's going to get worse. It really is. So just keep that in mind, if you want to get involved, every time, if you get the newspaper, it has every one of your elected officials, all the way from your US senator down to your city council people. Get involved, because we, it's going to get bad, and it scares me. It scares me not just for me, but it scares me for everybody around me. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Ms. Stonegrove?
Thank you. All the announcements that I had have been mentioned, so I have nothing further for this evening.
Nothing further for the council. We will adjourn the meeting at 8:08.